Oh, yes, maybe.
Hello, Pete.
How are you?
I regret it because I didn't.
No.
Yes.
Oh, my goodness, thank you.
Give it to me before you go first, dear.
I already got one.
Two minutes in here, buddy. Look at that, huh?
Look at those two.
That was fantastic.
We've been spending most of this time together.
I'm eating bread. All right, so it's like a call to be yours and sign the place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a religion and justice overall. It's okay. Welcome to tonight's board meeting. Board meetings are generally held on the third Tuesday of the month. The Board of Education is a body of school district residents elected by the community and charged with conducting school-related business. The meetings are conducted under the open meeting law but are not open forums for the community. That being said, visitors to these meetings are to conduct themselves properly and with respect to any other individuals at the meeting. The Board of Education reserves the right to remove any individual for improper display of behavior or inappropriate language. The Board of Education will have a period of time devoted to visitor requests following any board presentations from the approval of minutes shortly after the opening of the meeting. Individuals wishing to address the Board will be permitted to speak up to three minutes. A total of thirty minutes may be allowed for public counter. If we have any visitors tonight, we'll go over the guidelines a little more closely when the time comes. Hey, mind your own public space.
Mr. Seela?
Here.
Mrs. Emerson?
Here.
Mrs. Amber Davis?
Present.
Mrs. Benjamin?
Present.
Mr. Sval?
Uh, here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Beeler?
Here.
And we don't have Mr. Elijah Loison today.
He's coming from the OAKA race.
At the race, nice.
Thanks, Katie. We have a couple of presentations tonight. Our first presentation is going to be from our auditor. Welcome to tonight.
Um, my name's Ryan McLean, and I'm one of the principals with NMP. Hopefully, in front of you, there's two different copies. One is an executive summary and one is a letter of communication. Just going to walk through the executive summary first when everybody's at a good spot here. So on page one is a comparison of your general fund balance sheet. It's comparing your audit year to the previous period. At the very top, we start with your assets. It's primarily made up of your cash, any receivables. This is really state aid. No concerns over the significant dollars in state aid. It's really just timing of when those payments are made. And then due from other funds, this is really just inter-fund loan activity, completely normal through the course of business as general fund money is used to front-load, you know, grants before those draws occur. On the liability side, we have our accounts payables, accrue liabilities. This is really just timing of when services or days are worked versus when those payments actually go out the door. Your retirement system is one of your larger liability buckets. This is your TRS and ERS dollars. You will see a little bit of an increase from last year due to increasing rates and applicable wages that are applied to those. Other liabilities, these are really your flex benefits, HRA, FSA, employee withholdings. Again, year-over-year, very consistent on the liability side of things. Next, we have your fund balance. There's different categories of fund balance. So your restricted fund balance, these are those board-adopted legal reserves. And you'll notice on the far-right variance column, there was actually some funding into these reserves. A lot of this funding was actually the result of your decrease in assigned fund balance, which is the next category down below. Assigned fund balance is really commitments to the following encumbrance. There were some buses ordered in twenty-three, twenty-four. Buses didn't arrive in time. Those were the budget and the expenses were recorded in twenty-four, twenty-five year. Therefore, in twenty-three, twenty-four, that fund balance had to be set aside for that movement of budget. On the appropriated-for-tax side, that's what you're using to balance your budget. So in twenty-four, twenty-five, there was appropriated fund balance. In twenty-five, twenty-six, there was a shift to appropriated reserves, which is why that bucket is now zero as a comparison from last year. Those bracketed numbers on the variance side is a large contributing factor to why you had a fund reserves this year. Unassigned, undesignated fund balance, it's effectively what's left over. This is the dollars that are subject to real property tax law or the four percent of next year's budget. You are in compliance and at that four percent threshold currently. So all in all, total fund balance, row on the variance bracketed number is the overall erosion of fund balance this year. Any questions on the balance sheet? Next, we're going to look at a little deeper dive at your reserves. Starting from the top seven one, this is where your reserve balance is at last year. Revenue, this is interest that those reserve dollars earn. It has to go back to the reserves that earned that money. Appropriated reserves, if you utilize any reserves, this is where that would show. And then equity transfer, as mentioned, this was the money that had to be put back into reserves at the end of this twenty-four, twenty-five, this year. The chart at the very bottom is a summary of what you're appropriating out of fund balance and reserves to balance your budgets. So again, in twenty-four, twenty-five, you had usage of fund balance. In twenty-five, twenty-six, there was a shift to reserves. I will highlight, you know, it's positive to see a reduction of that reliance on fund balance and reserves, but as you run higher budgets, it's just a reminder to, you know, closely monitor your budgets and to weather these more tight years. Any questions on the reserves side? Next, we're going to look at your revenue side of your budget as a comparison to your actual revenue. So the total year twenty-twenty-five line, as a comparison to the total year twenty-twenty-four down below, you'll see there was some tightening on the revenue side of your budget. A large bucket of that is the state source budget to what actually came in. There's a lot of factors that come into this number, but it is a good reminder as you look into twenty-five, twenty-six to make sure that we're comfortable with where that budget is lining up. And then use of money in property is a little higher on the line here in twenty-twenty-five. That's the other larger number here. That's interest, so very positive you were able to take advantage of interest rates. But as I had just mentioned, unfortunately, a large portion of that surplus had to go back to reserves and isn't necessarily readily available for operations outside of reserve activity. On the expense side, very similar, just looking at total expense surplus compared to last year. There, once again, was a little bit of tightening on the expense side of the budget. And that chart in the middle is kind of how we get back to the overall change on the first page. Surplus on the expense side of your budget, surplus on the revenue side. Planned usage of fund balance offsets those surpluses. You have an additional amendment to your appropriated fund down for an out-of-district student or tuition, excuse me, and then that change in encumbrance factors into that overall net erosion from the first page. Any questions on the general fund as a whole? Next, we get into summary of your other funds. So included in that is your school lunch fund. This fund also incurred a deficit, but this one has a silver lining to it in that you are now in compliance with federal regulations. That fund balance now meets those required or expected six months of operating expense. Miscellaneous special revenue, that's really where your scholarships sit. Very minimal activity in and out this year. Debt service fund, this is premiums earned on debt, unspent debt proceeds on closed projects, interest earned on current borrowings. That has to be set aside to be used to offset future interest and principal costs. The district is appropriating from your debt service fund for twenty-five, twenty-six. Special aid fund, this is really where your state and federal grants sit. You'll notice their activity is almost cut in half this year. That is a direct correlation to those article COVID dollars. In twenty-three, twenty-four, there's approximately one point one million dollars in COVID spending. In twenty-four, twenty-five, it was under a hundred thousand. You still are over the federal compliance threshold to require a single audit for twenty-four, twenty-fives fiscal year. And then lastly, here at the bottom, we have your capital projects. These will vary significantly year-over-year depending on what capital projects, what phases of the capital project you're in. There were significant costs incurred on your twenty-three, twenty-four capital projects. You'll notice your fund balance is bracketed. It's completely normal. You are funding the beginning parts of this project with short-term debt or bands. Once those are converted to bonds or long-term financing, it triggers a revenue recognition and the brackets will weigh. Any questions here? Lastly, we have the NXY financial statements. This is a required financial statement in your large seventy-page full financial statements we present to you. What this financial statement does is it brings all your funds together, all of the general fund, those other funds, your long-term fixed assets, your long-term debts, and consolidates it into a more corporate style or typical, you know, business-style financial statement. Schools don't operate like this, schools don't budget like this, but just to explain to you what this schedule represents, at the very bottom, you do have a positive net position. That's a good thing. Right above there, the unrestricted of the bracketed one point nine, right above the total net position number. The school districts do have liabilities and you don't have really a funding source against, one of those being OPEB or other post-employment benefits. This is determined by a third-party actuary and represents those health insurance costs to retire for having retirees on your health insurance after employment. So that's really a high-level overview of your financials if there's any questions in any areas. And then lastly, it's just the communication letter. Very pleased to report a clean opinion. No significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses. In fact, there were no controlled deficiencies at all that we thought rose to the matter to disclose to you. That really is an accomplishment on your business office. This is not common to see, so I do want to give a shout-out to where it's deserved. And then higher, your recommendation, so this was communicated last year, satisfactorily addressing that is that school lunch fund now is not within that part of the threshold.
It's been something for every year for seven.
Is it jumped to six months?
It's a great problem, yeah, right? Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Any questions, Tim?
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Hopefully, see you next year again. All right, our second presentation tonight is our assessment data overview, and I would imagine it's the crew. And we won't ring a bell when it gets time for you to, I think you're running a bell, because I do bring bells over here during the presentation. I go, dong.
No, no, I don't ring a bell.
No, it's like your water bottle.
Oh, your water bottle. I'm trying to sneak the chair so I get the water bottle by accident.
Well, all right. It sounded cool, whatever you did, it was pretty.
I'm done when it's time to be done.
Is that right?
It doesn't sound good.
Sorry, man. Yeah, no, I'll be quiet.
I'm going to start us off and talk about our regions and our AP exams. Our region's data is going to be presented slightly different this year. A couple of reasons for that. One of the reasons why I'm presenting this is just single proficiency data, kind of presented without context. And it's not, originally, it wasn't by design, but it became necessary because we don't have the regional data yet, which we typically do at this time. So I know enough, because I share data back and forth with the principals, it's not official data. I kind of know where we stand. Some of these numbers that you're looking at here are going to be among the best in the region of the twenty-two and TV glossy schools. Some of them are going to be among the lowest and some are going to be somewhere in between. But what I thought I would do is present it sort of without context and then invite department chairs back in the upcoming meetings, November, December, because I think they're taking some pretty cool steps this year that are specific and targeted. And I'd love for you to hear from them directly. So we'll start in November with math and science, and they're going to talk to you about what the active steps they're taking. What we want to see is guaranteed growth at all assessments. That's going to be our goal. So I'm looking forward to hearing those department chairs present in November. We'll consolidate it. We'll have ELA and social studies in December. And then from there, when we've already started to work, we'll need to do a bit, sure, like I said, guaranteed improvement. So kind of on hold until next month, presenting these without context. We do have the AP advanced placement results. We usually get those back in early July. These are typically stellar. I don't know of schools that have more sparkling numbers than these. What I always like is green is good. We're above the averages that you see here around the state, and then these are given internationally. So you can compare us with those numbers. But I also like the ones where you see what we have in a small school like ours. Fifteen kids sitting for an exam is a high percentage of student population. And to me, I don't have fancy colors to highlight that, but that's, I think, we're exposing our kids to the rigors and the content and all of the lessons that they learn by taking EDC courses beyond the grade, but I think is good exposure. So I always think that this is worth celebrating in addition to the numbers that are well above the state and international average. So for English, we offer these typically to eleventh graders and twelfth graders. And literature and composition is typically reserved for seniors. I don't need, those seniors don't need an AP literature course. They take it because they want to challenge themselves. It's a tribute to the teacher and the kids who want to challenge themselves in their senior year. Usually, long after they've been accepted to the school, they know they're going to. So those are some really good numbers within our ELA department. Social studies numbers are equally good. Again, you see the high number of, wouldn't say if I were to highlight one department. I think the social studies department is really churning kids out and motivating them. Again, US government politics, this typically is reserved for seniors, for juniors. Last year, we had forty percent of our sophomores who challenged themselves with AP world history. These are phenomenal numbers, and then the achievement level speaks for itself as well. Significantly above the state and international average. And then science can be a little misleading. There's less kids in the seats. We're working on that. I think you'll see a major jump when I present this next year. One or two kids who don't do well on it, you'll see that drops the numbers, which is what we're seeing for chem and physics. And if you go back to the region slides, and I will just to make the point real quick, those are the kids who typically, you know, show mastery on the regions exams. So within the AP, although we're below these averages, one or two kids can kind of drop those, which is what I predict is happening there. But I'm pleased with the AP results. The region's results is an ongoing discussion, will continue into the next few months. And I wanted to start our presentation with this down here. And I'll stop if there's questions or we can ask them at the end, it's on you guys. But we'll spend the bulk of the rest of the time here talking about our three, three, eight.
Quick question.
Oh, yes.
So for the AP kids, they still have to take the regions, but?
They do, yeah.
So even though they might as well, it looks like in physics, they had to take the other test.
Right, and physics is never on the same year. Usually, they take the regions of the physics and then jump into the AP.
Oh, gosh.
That's not the case with the global, the US, different AP languages. Those are taken concurrently within the regions here. And then the last one is usually the one student there. And then ultimately, I include this over here because I think this is our ultimate let this test where we're at. I'm pleased with our graduation rate where it's going. You know, there was a bit of a drop, four percent, probably within the norm. We don't have the state average yet. My prediction is going to be somewhere around eighty-six percent. So we'll be above that. And then three, three, eight, give it a math test.
So just like Matt was talking about, we don't have all of the data for our regions. We don't have all of the data for the three through eight assessments where we normally compare. One exciting thing that we do have, if you recall, New York State shifted all its standards. We started now with New York State's next-generation learning standards. And we now have trend data. We have three years to look back, so we're going to be able to look across a grade level to see how we've done, but then we'll also be able to follow some cohorts, which is nearly where the meat is, being able to look at data like this. So this is the ELA trend data, and what this represents, twenty-two, twenty-three was the first year that the new assessments were given in ELA. So let's start with third grade. The third-grade cohort of classes, so third-grade year-over-year, you'll see there's a steady increase in our proficiency, thirty percent, thirty-eight percent, forty-two percent. If you recall, last year, we talked a lot about third grade and how it's all on computers, how it's a big shift. Some things our teachers, I think, actually spoke to you about, how they were going to make some shifts. So, you know, we're really pleased to see that increase there. The other thing that we can do with this too is now start looking at the cohorts of kids. So if I follow the same third-grade cohort who first took this test, the next year, when they were in fourth grade, they increased their proficiency to forty-three percent. The next year, when they were in fifth grade, it was up to fifty-six percent. That's exactly what we want to see, right? That's a perfect scenario. Are they all perfect scenarios? No, but that's what we would like to see. The third graders who first took it in twenty-three, twenty-four, again, if we follow that cohort of students, their proficiency increased. So again, that's exactly what we like to see. Go up to fourth grade, the fourth-grade class year-over-year, there's steady increase in the proficiency. Again, exactly what we're looking for. If we followed the fourth-grade cohort of students, again, if we go diagonally, steady increase in proficiency, the kids who first took it in twenty-three, twenty-four, increase in proficiency. So we jump up to fifth grade. We go across fifth grade from the first year they gave the assessment into this past year. There's an increase in proficiency, again, exactly what we're looking for. And you are going to notice something a little wonky with this cohort. So this cohort of students, the first time they sat for that assessment in fifth grade, they had a forty-four percent proficiency. In sixth grade, they had thirty-nine percent proficiency, and in seventh grade, they had thirty-five percent proficiency. So that's data that we really need to dig into and look at, what is going on to that cohort. So this little snapshot gives us a lot of information, and then we're going to dig deeper. If I look across this next cohort, this fifth-grade cohort to sixth grade, they had that increase that you'd expect. Sixth grade, again, fifty-six percent, down to thirty-nine and up to sixty-four. But if you look at this thirty-nine, that was that cohort that we know something's going on with. So overall, year-over-year, there's definitely an increase in proficiency. We do have a cohort in the unit exam room. Seventh grade, forty-eight, forty-nine, thirty-five, so we started increasing and we dropped. If you look, that color, it's that same cohort. Eighth grade, seventy percent, sixty-three percent, fifty-eight percent. This data looks a little strange, but when we get to the proficiency, we'll talk about this year's data and how we compare. We actually compare pretty well to the region and state, so I'm not sure if that was just this particular year in the test. But this is new data that we have to attack year-over-year. This is good data for us, the teachers, and for you to see too, kind of how we're tracking data with these new assessments. And so Heather's going to talk to you a little bit about three through five specifically this year or this past year, and then I'll jump in and do six through eight, and then we'll talk about action steps. Yes?
What exactly are the assessments you're showing? Like, what is it?
Percentage proficiency. So New York State, pardon me, deems for three through eight, they're scored on a four-point scale. And New York State deems a three or a four proficient. So that's, it's a New York State designation.
So that is who got a three or a four?
Correct, yep, you got it.
So even though eighth grade, if you look at the eighth grade, so year-to-year, it goes down, but if you follow its cohorts down, they're still, they're still going to be time to get there.
Yeah.
It's a good way to track it.
And it's, we finally have three good years that we can look at that we're comparing apples to apples instead of the old test to the new test. So that's why we wanted to present it this way to you this year.
And on this slide, this is our elementary ELA. We have ninety-six percent participation, which is also something that we're really proud of, how many of our students take the test. It's higher than most schools, I would say. So the trend data really helped us when we sat down with our teachers and went over scores and showed them how they did, because I didn't see, although there's lots of green in the areas to celebrate, and even the areas that are red are very close in number and not far off. It was really helpful for the teachers to see that trend data and not just focus necessarily on one year, but just really see how what they're doing is improving scores and getting the ones that are even like the forty-two to forty-four, like how we could easily get there next year according to how we've been moving. So I think that was something that was time well spent. They felt like it really put them in a better place, and we had a lot to celebrate here too. So this is just in ELA, how our third grade did in comparison to the region and the state, and how fourth grade and fifth grade did here.
And this is just the middle school data. Again, same thing, proficient or participation was ninety-four percent of all of our students take the test. Again, we're very proud of our participation rates. Sixth-grade cohort, sixty-four percent, again, above region and state. Seventh grade, that's that cohort that we just have some digging in to do. We also know seventh grade over the last three years, we've had different instructors. It hasn't been the same person in the classroom. So there's a lot of different factors that we really have to look at closely. Eighth grade, so that's one, go back to eighth grade for one second. So that eighth grade, if you remember, year-over-year, it looked like it dropped, and it did, the proficiency. But if you look at the eighth grade compared to the region and the state, that's why I wonder, was that test a harder test? Because we're definitely well above the region and significant, we're a little bit above the state. Math, this is the same kind of trend data. The only thing is a little different, these asterisks, which I'll explain to you. But we're looking year-over-year, how a grade level did and then how a cohort of students did. So if we start in third grade, they went from forty-six percent proficiency up to fifty-one percent proficiency. And you will see the little blue asterisks. If you recall, we had a pilot program for math. So last year, one section of our third grade was doing the pilot. And so that's just kind of indicating, because often when you implement a new program, there's a lot for teachers to learn, so it's not unexpected to actually have a dip. There wasn't a dip here, but it's not much of an increase. If you follow that third-grade cohort, you'll see they went from forty-six percent proficiency to forty-nine percent proficiency and then down to forty-seven. Again, that forty-seven indicates that was that pilot year. So we actually anticipate these to go up as teachers are more comfortable with the program. You can do the same thing with third-grade proficiency in twenty-three, twenty-four, was fifty percent, down to thirty-two. Again, that was that first year of implementation. So you can continue to follow those across, and I think you'll see that pretty consistently we're going up. I do want, and I have it the same color, we have this interesting cohort again. There were twenty-nine percent proficiency in math. This was that same ELA cohort that we looked at that was a little odd. Jumped up to sixty-eight proficiency percent and then down to fifty-four. So I'm not really sure what's going on. It's just one of those weird sets of data that we have to look into a little bit more deeply. But across the board, again, six, you'll see the trend, it goes up. Seven, your trend is go, it goes up. And again, we have a weird kind of data point here that you will be able to see last year's data a little bit more specifically, but this is what I wanted to point out. Also, is your eighth grade. So eighth grade, we know, I mean, we've had really, really low data with our eighth grade. This eighth-grade data is not our advanced kids, right? This is not the kids who take the regions. This is our kids that are taking straight eighth-grade math. With that said, we know they can learn and grow. So I'm super proud of the increase in proficiency that you see year-to-year, year-over-year. So they've gone from just over thirty percent proficiency to over half the kids now. Again, these are not our advanced kids that are proficient.
I think if we were measuring proficiency within our eighth grade, you'd take the twelve to fifteen kids that took the ELA. And if we were measuring proficiency within our eighth grade, you'd take the twelve to fifteen kids that took the algebra, all of whom one hundred percent.
Hundred percent proficiency.
Demonstrated proficiency on that algebra exam, and added it to this, you'd see that number jump closer.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a big number.
Yeah, and they all.
And they tracked all the way through that ninth grade group.
Yeah, so that's why you kind of can't go diagonally down to eighth grade.
No, you can't.
Right.
You can't shoot that number down at all.
We're left with a decision to, because we're not, we made the decision not to.
Well, what's the point?
Right, because they're getting a hundred percent proficiency in algebra, right?
No, because, and that number is justified. I mean, it's a.
And we're seeing the growth from eighth grade for those kids aren't taking it. That's what we want to see, and we're seeing it, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's over fifty percent, right? And that's taking out, you know, what is it, forty-three kids, there's forty-three kids in that class, right?
I don't read that number.
I don't have it.
I think it's forty-three. I, I'm pretty sure that there is. So you're looking at a third that's taken out, that's pretty, that's pretty substantial, that's a great number.
So we're, we're pleased with the eighth grade data for sure.
So here's our elementary math, which again, I mean, we started the pilot. We did reveal, there was one third grade class that did the pilot. Fourth and fifth was our pilot, because we have, you know, one math teacher in each of those grades. We expected to see a little bit of a dip, again, when you go back to the other slide and you see the trend. This looks a little bit more like dismal than the one before that did. So again, a lot of conversation of, you know, just things that we learned in this year, and things that our pilot teacher had turned key to the teachers that are all now implementing it this year. Even just great conversations of them feeling really confident that we've talked about that language of testing and how we're questioning students, and how everyone's really digging in and doing the work for that. And everybody felt like very confident that we know that this is going to go up, and that we talked about ahead of time, like, be prepared, we're going to see a dip, we're doing some new things. So, I'm really hopeful about it. Fifth grade, you know, stayed right there in the green. And I just think that this is going to keep going up now that we are all using a consistent curriculum. We're working together, we're having those like great conversations, using each other for resources. Connie's worked with me to help get them some PD and support and time to do this. So, I'm very excited for next year to see the difference in this slide and share it with you.
And sixth grade, again, sixth grade proficiency is up above region and state. Seventh grade is great at the region, just a little bit below the state. Eighth grade, that's the one that looked kind of wonky. It went from these high percentages down to fifty-six across the cohort. But again, it's because that eighth grade was increasing. And our eighth grade compared to the others, which again, we're really proud of, because we know we've really struggled at that level, we're above both the region and the state, so.
What do you think the, so why do you expect that they didn't reveal? Like, is it, is it more just because it's new language to them in that first year? And it's just kind of their, their having to relearn, or?
I think it's a combination of like students learning, maybe a new language, a new way, a new style. But even more importantly, it's teachers learning a new way. Like, they've been doing things for a really long time, and you get a new curriculum. And our biggest ask that I asked of them was to do it with fidelity, and to stick with it and do all of the things. And that's a huge learning curve for them. They embrace it. They were a team that wanted to be part of the pilot. We took time through the year to keep doing check-ins. What's working, what's not working, what do we want to do? And overall, like before, we had a chance to, like, we had an opportunity to be like, if this isn't it, guys, like, we have a chance to go. Like, if you don't want to do this. And collectively, everyone felt really confident in what they were doing and just learning so that they can become experts. None of them are meant to be experts of first year in Reveal. So I think that that is a huge learning curve for them. And I wanted them to feel if they were in a place where there was like grace, and we all trusted them and knew that they were doing their best, because if you don't give them that, I think it's a disaster. You know, Lynn and Connie started the process. They think people that they knew were going to give it their all, and I felt that way too. So, I'm already seeing this year, just like, they're like, I figured out how to do that from last year. Just like, that learning curve of that. And I'm excited for the kids. I just am excited for when we eventually get to the point that they've all gotten the same way and they're doing it. And that's going to take a little bit of time, even though I know that there's going to be a change next year. It's going to be a few years to see all of those kids come through with the same language, the same, you know, lessons and learning. So, I think we have a lot of exciting things to do.
Can I kind of lead this into the next slide? One of the things we've done differently this year, across the board, three through eight, is had our math and literacy teams focus on the scores with the assessments, and then some targeted steps to, to focus really only on growth. So I won't read every slide here, but the restructuring, we think is going to be a nice way to look at the data, look at what's being done in all of the grade levels and have that vertical alignment that we think's important, to focus on growth within these assessments.
And I think for my building, I'll say, one of the things that I'm most excited about is we found a way to really like bring in that K-one and two, and not have this mindset that state testing is just about grades three through five. But how our like kindergarten, first and second grade teachers can start using some language and questioning techniques to support that too. So, when the kids get to third grade, it's not like a whole new growth for them.
And that leaves us with science. And again, remember, there's a new science exam. It used to be fourth and eighth. They shifted last year to fifth and eighth. All new investigation, a lot of the very, very new. So, fifth grade this year, proficiency rate was fifty-one percent, and we were above the region and the state, which we're very proud of. Eighth grade, seventy-six percent proficiency, above the region and the state, very proud of. And then, when you look at, the trend data is a little different because they don't take it every year. But you can see how we have done the first time we took it in fifth, we had thirty-eight percent proficiency. So we did significantly, same with eighth, we did significantly.
And we're receiving the calls that we want to hear. I got a call from a colleague the other day, what's your science teacher doing with those assessments? And they've already been in contact with, with our teachers, complaining a thing or two about what's going on at LA. So you know, that's what the calls you want to receive. Something's going on with, with getting it done in the science classrooms.
From, from elementary, yeah. But that's the thing, that's the foundation, it's those, those kits that you, you bought into, and you're using, and fidelity.
Well, it's that vertical alignment too.
It's huge. And that's the three to four-year plan that you guys have been following through with, that I couldn't be any happier with. I mean, that's where it shows.
Yeah. So, we don't have a science team like we do a math and literacy team. They're just kind of different anomalies. But in talking to and working with the science teachers, these are the things that they're doing. They're using the release question, item analysis. They identified areas of strength, areas of growth. They work to do that vertical alignment. There are big areas for both fifth and eighth, have identified increasing focus on vocab and the key concepts. Incorporating more reading. I think we told you this last year after the first administrative stration of those exams. They're reading tests, and the science teachers are realizing that. So there's more graph work, chart work, map work, utilizing release question format as they come up with their own assessments. They're providing additional time to interact with the content, or with the content. One of the big things both fifth and eighth realized is the investigations say, oh, it should take about this long. The kids aren't getting it in that chunk of time. So, in the elementary level, they're incorporating into their MPSS time more time to interact with the content. And at the middle school level, they're just extending the amount of time they do the investigation. State suggested this much. We tried to do things with fidelity the first time. We said, no, it's not working. Our kids need more, so they're adjusting. And then they, I mean, attend professional learning opportunities. Bosse's is great with keeping us up to date and sharing the, with the investigations in particular, well, this doesn't really work. And so like, once you try it this way, or now the state's thinking of tweaking this, they're like, stay current. So, not a complete team the way with math and lit, but they do the same types of things.
I, I thought this was a great presentation. I know how much hard work goes into, I know it looks like slides, but I also understand that those are hours and things to be, instead of collecting data and looking at the trends. And I agree with Justin. I think the continuity and flow with seeing this trending over the course of three to five years, I think that's where we're going to truly start to see that growth. And we're going to be able to use that data to drive instruction even further. So I'm definitely excited about that, and there's a lot of green, I mean, which is great.
We're really pleased with the trend data, because we could see that even though those numbers might not be quite where we want them, but look where we were. Like, look, it's going up. Look at that cohort of kids, they're going up too.
Yeah.
So it, it kind of is affirming for us and for the teachers as well.
And I don't even look at, the area is where we know there's growth. But I think those are opportunities too, to talk about what we're doing, what we're trying to do. So I think those are opportunities to look forward to address the challenges.
I agree. I think that this is really interesting, because I mean, it's awesome to see the action plans around it, right? Because, I mean, you don't ever go into it, you don't think you're going to do a hundred percent, a hundred percent of the time, while understanding the places where we need to improve and how we're going to cover those opportunities. And do the work for that seventy-three cohort, sort of understanding what's happening there, so we can probably support them throughout the rest of their, their journey with us. So, thank you for sharing this. It's great.
And I think beat the circle back to the ideal of the Reveal. I think when you get these programs, they're packaged in a way where they're overwhelming. It, it isn't just like, this is what you do day one. It's like, this is what you do for day one with, with this component, and that component, and that component. And I think the use of fidelity is extraordinarily overwhelming. It, it really is, because it's just not opening up a manual anymore. You've got these digital pathways. You have, you know, what is it, you know, if the child doesn't do this, what MTS lesson does it line up to? And it's like, well, where do we start? And that's where it's really hard. But once everybody's on the same page, it's going to take, it's going to take like three to four years. And you're going to see some major, major shifts in your trends, especially if you, you know, you focus on that in your meetings, and then your observations are based on that, and, and you follow through all the way, which I'm convinced you will. And it's, it's a big lift. And it's hard, because like, as a teacher, just like any, any, any skills training, you have certain tools that you go to. And this isn't one of them, right? It's, it's not a personalized, this is not you, and in your curriculum, you tend to personalize, right? And like, this is the tool I'm going to go back to, like, I'm going to make my alligator, my alligator from signs of inequalities, but that's not, that's not great language. That's terrible language, and it's not mathematically sound, right? And I'm using alligators, or like, my buddy's using alligators, and I used to use Ralph Es. Now Ralph Es and Smilep would always go into the more chicken wings than the other chicken wings. And there was signs of inequalities, but that isn't consistent, right? As much as I hate to get rid of my buddy Ralphie, I had to put him, put him away, because it's not consistent. And I think that that's the hardest, is you feel like you're losing your identity, but you see deeper in the curriculum how tightly it's spiraled within these programs, the more you teach it. Like, ten years into a, a program that I'm in, it's like, oh, no kidding. That's why I would do it this way. That's it. It doesn't feel right, but it makes sense. And, and so, the hardest part about it, and being a general educator, you're no longer a general educator. These are such specialized curriculums now, even the primary, that you have to be an expert. And these programs help you to do that in a consistent way. So I'm very thankful that you guys are going with Reveal and doing this as a whole. I'm very grateful for that. So thank you. It's hard, su- su- super hard. And the signs look great. That's a really tough. That's a dumb one. Thank you. This was great. And I really look forward to it. So Matt, you said November, you've got math and science coming? I, I love that. I love talk goals perhaps, and like, you know, this is, you know, an area that we like to do. Cohort is, looks great, and fluctuates, but you like to see consistency with the numbers from, you know, the grade level year after year, within a range. And we're seeing it. So, thank you. If there's anything else, or bless you.
No, I love the data. I also, I'm also intrigued, I mean, I'm a parent who sits in CSE meetings, and I'm also intrigued on the special education component side of things, and the HDP side of things, you know? We have kiddos that are part of these percentages that have multiple accommodations. And the fatigue that they face when taking these, like, all of those things need to also be taken into consideration as well. So, and I think that our department here does a phenomenal job of making sure that our kiddos get all of those accommodations so that they can feel successful, because they are part of these percentages on these slides as well. So I think that that's a whole other component that needs to be taken into consideration.
Yep, each cohort is very.
Yeah, we don't ever turn our special ed kids away. Our special class kids also participate in this. So they're all taking, they're all going to that local regions bound. We know the language is going to change with the port of the graduate, but we don't have any nice of students here. So that means everybody is assessed the same way, and making sure that my team is meeting the needs of those accommodations to provide access. It's huge.
Which is a big lift, man, when you, when you have to figure out, you know, you know, the alternate locations, less than six kids with, you know, this red to you and the earphones on that way. It gets, it's a lot, it's a lot to look at. So, so thank, thank you so much, guys. Appreciate it, yeah. Onto the applicable minutes, three, be it resolved at the minutes of the September sixteen, twenty twenty-five regular meeting, and September eighteen, twenty twenty-five special meeting be approved. Can I get a motion? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or just passes? Hey, do we have any visitors request tonight?
We do. We have Pastor Timothy Young here.
Hello, Mr. Young, how are you? Can you upstairs down? Whatever makes you feel comfortable.
I'm kind of tired of sitting.
Okay, yeah, there you go. I don't blame you.
So I got three minutes, I gotta get going.
No, 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 you're, you're, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine.
Well, first of all, I'm here to speak about Good News Club. I was here a year or so ago.
Yeah, it was a couple years ago.
About transportation.
Yep.
But I'm here for a little bit different thing today, which I'll get to. I didn't realize it was seven or eight of you. This is a link with a principal talking about, especially one particular student, that the Good News Club really impacted and changed them in remarkable ways. Thank you.
Yeah, we can share it, yeah.
So I'll get right to it. Children today face an increasingly dangerous and hopeless world. A good news club beats kids right where they are. CEF certified teachers who are thoroughly screened, trained, and equipped lead dynamic good news clubs in public and private schools, community centers, churches, and neighborhood homes. They deliver the timeless truths of the Bible in exciting and engaging ways. These clubs gather just once a week, making each meeting a specially highly anticipated event for the children. With parental permission, children learn the gospel through these meetings. Good news clubs are more than teaching character traits. Each week, there will be a Bible lesson, songs, games, and other activities that teach them to be caring, loving, considerate, people of integrity, but also how to resolve conflicts in a peaceful, rational, loving way, and also come to an agreement, to agree to disagree, without any hostilities, or, you know, just down, downing somebody, you know? Thinking them feel less than, than something because they believe or feel a different way. It's more than, than character traits, as I said. It's, it's like a, a different way of looking at life and dealing with life's issues and problems. Character traits are fine, but also instilling in our children the proper way to do things and to come to, to good resolves regardless, whether you come to an agreement with someone else or not, without getting upset and going off and, you know, today's with the media and everything, and social media. You know, they're bullying each other online, and, you know, this, this, we teach them ways to resolve their conflicts, as I said before, without getting into things like that and bullying. And we know, we've heard of the horror stories of that. You know, kids committing suicide and other things. So it's a lot more than character traits. It's, as I said, life skills, abilities. There are currently sixty-one schools in New York State with good news clubs taking place in them. Our region alone, there are good news clubs in Alexander, which has forty students right now. They were going to do sixty, but they didn't have the room. There was more that wanted to get in. Warsaw has about forty. The rest of these, I'm going to mention, I don't have the statistics on how many kids. But Piney Falls, Lima, Lebonia, Genesio, Chilai, Rochester, Danville, Syracuse, I believe Seneca Falls, and also several others in the region have good news clubs in their schools. So, what I'm asking for is, if, it'd probably be like the, the beginning of December, if we could put on a good news. if we could put on a good news club in the elementary school, and, you know, invite the children, and just get them familiar with it, and see what the response is. And if the response is favorable, hopefully, doing a good news club in the springtime, because the good news clubs are usually in the fall, I think they're five weeks each one, and then five weeks in the spring. And this is always with the parents' permission, you know, to come, because we do base it on biblical principles. So it always has to be with, with the parent's permission. I already have several, several people interested from not only Oakfield Community Bible Church, where I minister at, but also other churches in the Oakfield area that are interested in partaking in this. And everyone is taught, they get training for this, and they are screened, because our children's safety and well-being is of utmost importance to us. You know, we've heard horror stories about, you know, I'm not gonna point out anything, but, you know, things that have happened, and we take the utmost precautions to eliminate that. I would also like to mention, I did meet with Principal Peterson at the high school. I didn't realize that there was another school out behind the bus garage at the time. And Mister, Mister Peterson was, was, you know, he wasn't against it. He thought it was a good idea. In fact, he told me that there is a Bible club in the high school, middle school. And I did have an appointment set up with Miss Newton, Mrs. Newton, at the elementary school. And I really don't know what happened. I showed up that day, and she said, do we even get the message? Not, not Mrs. Newton, but the receptionist. I said, no, I haven't been in the office, and she said, well, the meeting's canceled. She won't meet with you. And I tried to talk with this lady, I don't know who it was, and try to relate her, because she kept saying, we teach character traits, and I tried to explain it to her, that it's more than character traits. And I felt that I was, I was treated very disrespectfully and kind of rudely by this lady. I asked if I could just talk with the principal for a minute, and she just kind of closed the door and kept saying, we teach character traits, and, you know, that was it. She kind of just shut the door on me.
Miss Young, real quick, I don't mean to interrupt you. I, I feel like I was maybe four years ago, that Pastor Jack was here.
Pastor Jack, yes.
With Mark Colley.
Yep.
And there was, there was a request for transportation at, at the time, and there was a lot of communication breakdown, back and forth. And it got to the point where we extended the opportunity to do it, but then there was no communication back at all. And I wouldn't say it soured our relationship between the district and the church, but it, you know, left me kind of wondering, you know, what, if they wanted this to occur, why weren't they more responsive back? So it seems similar in the way in which you're, you're, you're characterizing the elementary school and communication on your end, even though if you weren't a part of it. I just recall that it was, it was frustrating. Because we spent some time trying to coordinate it. But it's, it's, it's the same, it's, it's the, it's the, it's the club they refer into, good news club. So I, I don't think it's a, it's a, it's a bad idea. I just, I just recall in my time here, and that's the great thing about being on the board for a period of time, you remember relationships.
Yes.
That maybe that didn't work out so well. And to bring up this situation here, I don't know what the communication barrier was, but on the same token, I don't think I ever expressed my dissatisfaction with the communication from the club that you're representing right now, so I'm gonna take that opportunity. Yes, it does look like, in the past, I'm looking at data right now, that other school districts have, have done this as well. And outcome is to try to create a better individual, I think, and I think that that's what we're all about here at Reveal. This would be five weeks in the fall, five weeks in the spring?
Yes, well, the falls, that's why we were gonna go with the Christmas party in December.
To try to be as like a, like a mix it, like a, like a kind of like.
Yeah, see who's interested in. And then the part with the, I've never spoken with this, you know? So it's nothing against, but I just, you know, I just, you know, maybe it was just me that hated something.
It could be. And then I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not criticizing you or your ability to communicate. I'm just recalling, you know,
Yes.
Multiple, I'm looking at multiple emails that, you know, to try to reach out, and then nothing in return. And phone calls that were documented here, and it's, I just, it's notable, and I'd like to have a better relationship than what we once had. I just,
Yes.
Historically speaking, I, I try not to forget about the past and look at it and see if we can make it better. I think the other thing too is, was when we're requesting space, which is not something that we would necessarily deny, but if there's, there's a fee involved, we would have to discuss the fee, and it's something that's based on contingency budget that we're expecting everybody to pay. So I guess we'll be contacting.
Yeah, could you, if you have some contact information, could you give it to the district clerk to Faye right there?
Yes, I'll give you my personal phone number.
Yeah, great. And, and I will reach out and discuss it in more detail.
And thank you. I, I just, I, I wanna work with you.
Yeah, well, I, I know about what happened back when Pastor Jack was here, and I don't know who the other fellow.
And it's okay. And you know what? I think best intentions, right? Like, I have best intentions every day, but I don't always communicate them.
Yeah, it doesn't always work that way.
Right? And I'm not pointing fingers, but it, it happens. And I'd love to have a much better relationship moving forward and better communication, so.
Yes. Communication is key.
It is, because otherwise, nothing gets accomplished, right?
That's right.
Well, thank you so much for checking out this website.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it for visitor's Faye tonight?
Yep, that was it.
Yep, okay. Item five, approval of warrants. Be resolved after an audit of the bills, payment of the warrants, internal claims, audit reports be approved. Can I get a motion? Maria got the first, and then Mary's got the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's see here. So, I'm sorry. Five, two treasurer's report. Be resolved the treasurer's report for August twenty twenty five be approved. Can I get a motion? Thank you. Any second? Okay.
Kevin can have it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. No policy tonight?
No policy tonight.
All right, Mr. Banzer, we've got Laura.
What would you like to do? Do you mind if we switch? Can I go first?
Hey, how can I say no?
Well, I just wanted to, last week was Board Appreciation Week, but obviously, when meetings fall, that may dictate when these things can happen. What you have in front of you is a certificate, and that certificate was made by Mrs. Marsh's and Mrs. Yance's class. And I also wrote you a note that it required me to stand because it's so big. Thank you. And it says, "Dear Board of Education members, thank you. We are writing this letter to thank you for all of your support to Oakfield Alabama Central School. We appreciate all of your time and dedication you give to our school and students. Thank you for making decisions that help improve our education and learning. Your leadership, integrity, and advocacy for quality education here do here make a lasting impact. We know that your job is not easy, and it takes time away from your families. Because of your support, we have more opportunities to learn and grow. We are grateful for the time, energy, and passion you have given in shaping the future of our schools. Thank you for, uh, thank you for, sorry. Caring about our students and our future. Sincerely, Jonathan, Brooke. Mrs. Marsh, Mrs. Yance, Dom, Robert, and Josh." So, and just thank you for everybody, and appreciate all that you do.
So sweet and beautiful. Thank you. And Justin, from.
Can I have a vowel, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Script tonight, that's great.
It's my turn, yeah. Regarding the audit and the report, obviously, we have some work to do on the budget. We can't continue to operate with the deficit year to year. But as far as the management letter and no current deficiencies, I have to give a lot of credit to the business office in the past, because those things don't just happen, you know, this didn't happen overnight. So that's having a system of, of systems and procedures in place, and the ladies, what they, the work they do all year long, so that when, when the audit happens, and they ask for a lot of things, and digging out a lot of payments and paperwork and all the reports they ask for, and they have them readily available, everything's there, and no deficiencies, that's if it just happens. So I'd like to give a lot of credit to them for that. And yeah, that's, it's, it's good to have the time for this year, looking to play with that if I thought it would be. But like I said, we have work to do on the budget. And good news, all the state reporting is done in by the last deadline, so I was very happy with that.
And if I could just add, again, it was a tremendous team effort, you know, from everybody, you know, in the office, Faye, Jenna, Stacy, you know, Laura, and, and, you know, and it's very, you know, very nice of you to acknowledge what came prior. But again, I know there was a tremendous amount of work, you know, put over since I've been here. And really, to get that kind of letter is, is a testament to everybody, so thank you for that.
Super meaningful. Super meaningful. That's fantastic. And I also appreciate the luck timeline here. This is, I just love seeing this. I wonder if, I know Rob's not here tonight, Rob Z, I wonder if we would be able to post this and have this on our website so that people are able to see this at all, because it's really, I know it's a draft. I, I know what it's, I'd like that you know one of the statements that was heard over and over again from Mrs. Supreme, was that transparency and communication was subpar. And that I think this is a great way to kind of get that back. And either maybe put it out on the community parent square, whatever, the grouping parent square, just to blast it out there and say, here it is, and then there won't be any, any question that, you know, we're not, we're not taking this seriously. Thank you. This is, this is really well laid out. This is exactly what I think we were looking for.
So the dates for the hearings and the workshops will just be in two places instead of one?
Yep, yeah. This is great. This is great. Thank you, Laura. Let's see, Rob, Laura, Lynn, back there.
One of the things I wanted to highlight, Matt and I worked with our special ed committee and our scheduling committee. One of the big focuses right now at the state is the transition for students with a disability after graduation, like, what's next? And Courtney Marsh and Lisa Yance and that crew, they've really taken that on, and they're doing an internship class. So on Tuesdays and Thursdays, she's taking small groups of students out into the community. St. Quino's has been very gracious with hosting our students. She's also reaching out to places in Akron, and trying to stay local, but also give them an idea of, you know, some different factory work, some repetition work. And as they're going through ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, she's going to continue to create almost like a pacing guide for this, where we're gonna look at soft skills as your ninth and tenth graders, and then interviews, and resumes, and thank you letters, and work ethic. So she invited me in before they went out, and we kind of talked about expectations, and, you know, if we're asked to do a job that we don't want to, how to handle that, you know, cell phone conversations. So she's really taken the ground running with this, and I'm really excited to see how this can grow in the next three years.
Super cool. Love it. Connie?
We talked that a lot already.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you've done a lot of talking.
One of the fun things that had been going on, Health and Wellness Committee, so Natalie kind of hung out with Health and Wellness last year, and this year, we have Kevin hanging out with us. And since the last board meeting, we have had our walk to school event. And we always do the Friday before home, or Friday, I guess, kind of a homecoming weekend. And we had beautiful weather. The kids loved it. The community loved it. It gave opportunity also for Officer Wesso, our new SRO, to meet a lot of the families in a informal way, because a lot of the families come out and walk, and he's always there, just like Jordan was, with patrol cars and kind of helping kids cross. So that was a great kind of kickoff to the year with that. And then we just had our first Health and Wellness meeting. And while we don't have large numbers, I think we're making progress. One of the things that we're trying to do in that, you may remember, kind of the monthly things, like, maybe we can come out via parent square, trying to figure out how to educate. It never just quite happened, and we know families have been overwhelmed with the number of parent squares. So what we're going to be working on is kind of a Health and Wellness calendar of events, of things that are going on, not just what the committee is doing, but what is happening all over, and putting those education cases as links right in there on the website. So we're kind of working with that internally to create a document, and I will, will work with Steph Underhill, who kind of helps us with our website, to actually put that stuff now on the website, so the community can find it easily. So we're kind of excited about that.
Mr. Peterson? Oh, no, Mrs. Newton, sorry. Sorry, Mrs. Newton, sorry.
We had our special persons luncheon. We had almost four hundred visitors that day, and my exciting shareout is with our new visitor aware. We were able to check in every single person that entered the building. So where before, it was kind of a day where we were all a little on edge, because it felt like an open door, and, you know, although like, we were very fortunate, it just didn't feel great this way. Every single person was checked in. We knew who was there, who left. And the beauty was, every parent that's already done the visitor aware didn't have to do anything, except just come in, scan their barcode, and it really just like ran super smoothly. And we had some help from our PTO members, who were willing to be there and greet people and troubleshoot anything, and you would have never known that many people were in the building. Our kids had lots of special guests, and our staff is always rallied around the ones that didn't have someone with them. So every student had someone to have lunch with, so it was a beautiful day.
Sure beats the first time, right? Like, when you, I think that was your first week here, wasn't it?
That was parents.
And like to school, and lockdown, and by the den. I did seven events in five days. Yeah, initiation by fire.
Mr. Peterson?
I wanna highlight something that I think is gonna be well received. One of my goals going into this year was to bridge some gaps that exist among the various stakeholders. And one of the things I wanna do this year is to offer, well, by the way to do that, I'm gonna share some of the great things that are going on here by the people who make this place tick. So I wanna do a staff spotlight, if not, if not a teacher of the month, or even a staff of the month, but just a spotlight, so that we can highlight things that we see every day, but maybe the community doesn't see. So our first staff spotlight, and I would never spotlight anyone without their permission, will be Mr. Robert, who's exceptional in a lot of ways. But I wanna put something together that we can celebrate all the cool things he's doing in the classroom, and as a coach, and just as a person, and highlight that, so that we can share it with our community. So look for that to be coming out on Facebook and the website and other forms of social media, parent square, soon. He's gonna be our first one. We're also gonna spotlight a club or an activity as well. So we're gonna highlight Link Crew. I know they've presented here, so it's no secret to this board for the community as well. So we'll be doing that ongoing, from the month of twelfth of the year.
That's awesome. That's fantastic. Thank you for that.
Should give their own character break, like the merging through the hall.
Let's see here. Mr. Mongeau, any updates?
Fall sports are starting to get into sectional time. Our first soccer game tonight at Cal-Mong, and I'm moving to sectionals for everything else. And then I had the privilege of escorting our eighth graders down to DC. It was a fantastic trip. It was pretty eerie to see how quiet it is in DC these days. But even with some of the things being shut down, they had a fantastic trip. Got to take them to some places we don't normally take kids. It was a very, very good experience. Was able to share Mrs. Bottonhardt's first trip. It was actually her first trip ever down to DC. She did a fantastic job leading the way, and Mrs. Bookmiller guiding her, so got to help that transition. It was a great, great event. Glad to be a part of it.
That's fantastic. Thanks, Jacey. Rob is absent tonight. Adam and Trina. Mrs. Under, is absent, or not here, and Elijah must still be running. So on the new business, I hope I didn't miss anybody. I feel like I, no?
No, I'll check it here.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, on the new business, consent agenda items eight point two to eight point seven. So be it resolved that items eight point two to eight point seven be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion? So Jaykey and then Mallory second. Any discussion?
I have a discussion on the A four.
A four, what do you got, Bee?
Just that, so it looks like it's the resident that did turn in their egg exemption for the, for the year. So something tells me you guys have never filled out egg exemptions, but I do a lot of them every year. So every year you have to reapply for your egg exemption. It's just a format, it's a form you got to fill out. You do it once a year. So I do it in three different countries. And most of the assessors send you the letter that you have to sign, it's all filled out, you have to do it. And I know myself, I would forget to do it if one of those assessors didn't send it to me. Because it's just like what they do automatically. And it's one of those things, you do it literally once a year, it takes you five minutes, but it's just not on your radar, right? So I don't know, like to me, to not give some grace to, to this individual for one year for, for getting to do this. You know, it seems a little bit like, I don't know how long that this person's owed this property, how long it's been a property. But it's just one of those things, like, okay, so you messed up. Ten, thirteen hundred dollars, like, I don't know, it just seems, if somebody does exemptions every year, it's just one of those things I know can be very easy to get about and not do. And it's not like this individual's been here every year for the last three years and now I've got to do it again.
So how, how, I, I'm not real familiar with it at all, Bee.
So basically your property, so if it's an egg or cultural property, you can do, if it's being used for egg, you can apply for an egg exemption, which just lowers the value of the property. So you pay less taxes.
Okay, so these go out?
And I don't know how Pembroke does this, and maybe Pembroke's assessor doesn't even send them to you. Like, there's nothing that says the assessor has to send you the letter to sign. Like, it is up to you as a landowner to actually do this every year. Most of the assessors that I work with are nice enough to just send you it, to remind you, get it done, set it back. But I don't know what to do.
The only thing that I would say, I'm just reviewing the letter. In the first paragraph, it talks about, the claim was that it was sent on time. And then when the assessor checked, or the director checked with the assessor, the assessor said that was not the case. So it's not just about, I just want to point out that it's not just about.
Timeliness is necessarily not qualification.
Oh, no, I did do it. And then it was like, and then they tried to confirm it and they couldn't.
So it's not like they came forward and was like, hey, I forgot about this.
They thought they did it.
Yeah.
And then it's not. Also, the taxes have already been, the tax bills are mailed out and already distributed among the property owners. So if we allow them this exemption, it's the school losing that money. We can't collect it from the other taxpayers.
And then, and then if there's any, you know, by.
Funny, we would have gotten it if they just signed this paper.
We, we would have because the levy would have been distributed among everybody else. So we would have gotten that money.
Right, but we're talking about thirteen hundred.
Just talking about what?
Thirteen hundred dollars.
The other thing with things like this, and again, I, you know, I, I can, I can empathize. You start to do these things, then the next person comes in, right? You kind of set a precedent, well, I was late, well, I was late. You, you know, it, it just can be, it has the potential to be a slippery slope.
Yeah, no, and I, I understand that. And, and I just, I guess.
Yeah, no, I.
Had the discussion of, you know.
Yeah, appreciate you brought it up.
Have we ever?
I can't recall this ever happening.
I know, I've never.
It's not.
And as you, Rob's pointing, like, you know, okay, so you, you let this one slide and, you know, there's always.
So wait a second, they got it in, they did get it on time? They said they did, but they, they, they didn't get it in on time. But it wasn't just the timeliness, there was another factor? I'm sorry, I'm not a fast reader.
No, no, they, they said, they said that they.
I had to read this really closely the first time I looked it up.
Basically, the, the way it's written, the owner stated that he had something to do, sending the renewal to the assessor by the status date, Marsh first, and had retained a copy. In reviewing the paperwork, the resident provided appeared the original copy, it was the twenty-four. So he thought, and then, and then they sent it, and, and so it was, it was late. So it wasn't the correct people seeming, based on what we know.
Are you, are you okay to move forward with the seat? Okay, um, all in favor? Opposed?
I'm just going to abstain because this is a personal matter for me, so.
Yeah, that works, that works. Uh, so motion passes, six to one. And then, yeah, eight point, eight, yes, sorry. There we go. All right, eight point eight, superintendent search consult. Be it resolved, the board of education appoint and I indemnify Kevin M. McDonald, chief operating officer of the Genesee Valley Boses, as search consultant for position of superintendent of schools for Oldfield, Alabama Central School District. Mr. McDonald shall receive no additional compensation. The district agrees to reimburse the Genesee Valley Boses for incidental costs associated with the search process. Costs may include or not limited to printing, advertising and postage. Can I get a motion? Thanks, Bee.
Second.
Second. Uh, any discussion? Two weeks ago, I believe it was, two weeks ago, we met with Mr. McDonald to listen to what all of our options were in the search for a new superintendent. He laid out to us several different choices. But Mr. McDonald is absolutely the person to do this. This will be his thirty-sixth superintendent search and the data that he presented to us is irrefutable. The people that he has helped, the districts that he has helped, I, 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 it's hard to argue this, right? His track record is great for the most part. And I think we have to now take steps moving forward from here and determine what is the process going to look like. We don't have any end date yet. But obviously, as much as we enjoy you for the answer, we're going to have to move on from you at some point, unfortunately. So that's, after approving this tonight, hopefully the process will get started. Just gathering the dates from you guys, it looks like November twentieth will be the date that we were all available for. So be looking for that in communications out on parent square or through the website, it will be November twentieth. To kind of go through, have another, what do we call it, retreat? Retreat, yeah, the retreat. So, that's, that's, that's that, I guess. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Let's see here, eleven, one, consent agenda. Be it resolved that items eleven point two through eleven thirteen be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion? Can I get a second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Now, there's a couple of just quick discussion points here, I think, for tenure people.
Yes, so, yep, so there are four, the board just approved four tenure appointments. And again, we'd like to congratulate those, those individuals for, for that, going through that process. And, and, and being approved for tenure. Congratulations to all of you. And again, we wish, you know, the continued partnership and work on behalf of our kids, so congratulations.
So who do we have back here? Are there unfamiliar faces back here tonight, I apologize?
This is my Santa. This is Melissa Hofmeister.
Oh, Melissa, congratulations.
And I were both happy to approve her. She is our district social worker, so she works with all of our kiddos. And this is Melissa Waldren, she's one of our teaching assistants that works in her special class. And they're both amazing. And we also have Amy Kojay, our speech language pathologist, and Lindsay Cudney, our nurse that couldn't be here tonight. So we're really thankful for all of them and glad these two could be here with us.
Well, thank you so much, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You were stuck with us, girl. Wait a second, we didn't say all in favor. Did we, we did?
We did.
We did it?
They're still in.
And then also, I think eleven thirteen is retirement too. There's, there's, there's two that I don't, I don't want to miss out here. John Mullin, who has really done a great job here over the years of making our school district a beautiful. John's a great guy. And I, I will miss seeing him on Saturday mornings when we come and play and, or the evenings. He's a good guy. And then Rita Abramus is also a person that we really appreciate all of her work here and wish her the best of luck. Looks like January is going to be the date as well for her, so thank you. Closing remarks, Kevin, how about you start us off tonight?
I don't know. But I feel like the year is already starting to fly by. As Jacey said, the fall sports are already sectional, just crazy to believe. We had an amazing walkthrough earlier today, just to see the amazing progress that our instruction team, our contracting team have been able to do for us. Still more work to be done, but stage by stage, it has been an impressive display of just innovating great, great things for our students and staff. To give them wonderful materials to learn here at Oldfield, so I'm very proud of the work that's been done. Also, just a personal note, I'm very proud of just UPK as well. My first child Evelyn, it's the first year at the school. And I'm just blown away by everything that Mrs. Bottenhardt's been doing so far. I love the communication with parent square personally. Every day I get something. Whether it's, you know, pictures from today's fire safety. My, my child had a little bit of traumatic experience last year with the fire people. Quiet this morning, but we still got her to school. And she was jumping in and out of the fire truck with a smile on her face, so she had a great day today. But just the stories that she comes back home with about Mrs. Bottenhardt with a smile on her face and she just loves it, which is great. So it's great to see as a first time parent in the district. So I'm very proud that we have come back here and my kids are able to be a part of the district, so it's very heartwarming. Of note, on Friday, we have the flu clinic, I think it's one thirty to four thirty, that's in the auditorium. Make sure that people come, give their flu shot if they want. And be safe and two fighters for now for Halloween.
What did you say? Oh, yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, we're close. Yeah, that's too good. Bee?
Think I'd like to shout out, I feel like we've talked about the business office like three, four months straight. And it's always been great things. To have, it hasn't been easy for me in the business office over the last year, right? So we had leadership change, we had staff downsizing, but you guys continue to rock it and knock out great things. Which, and I think that says a lot to the staff, like through that changes, you guys have still been great things. So shout out to the business office again. I feel like it's every month, we've had, we haven't talked about business office in years and I know it's every month. It's against the budget time, right? And I also got to go to DC last week with the kids. So the thing that I know, I said, okay, not from Oldfield, but the, the, the tradition of the DC trip. It was evident, evident in, in doing it and this book miller's done for nineteen years. Which kind of like another level of commitment to that and I hope that that continues a lot. But even with a lot of changes, because we weren't able to do it how she typically does it with the shutdowns, we weren't able to go to certain places. But you would have never known from the schedule that there were any changes to that, like it just was smooth. And it was a lot to do in three days. I don't think you probably even touched, not even ten percent of what you can do in DC while you're there. But she got you through as much of it as possible could in three days and it's a great trip, so glad to see it. Wish us, hope you have a blessed future.
Coming back this way, huh? Okay. I'll echo Mr. Beeler, the communication has been fantastic this year. I remember when my oldest was in sixth grade, I remember being nervous that that was going to start to drop off. But that team just does such an amazing job. Not overly communicating, but communicating enough to like, hey, parents, gentle reminders, but it is your kids' responsibility. So I appreciate that gentle thrust, if you will, into the middle school from a parent perspective. I think they do a wonderful job at that. Congratulations again to the business office. I know that those audits can be quite stressful and to come away with a letter like that is pretty remarkable and worth mentioning. The presentation was amazing. I love seeing the data, I love seeing the trends. And it's nice to know that we're using that data to drive instruction and to drive professional developments. And the buy-in is evident. And I know it's a heavy lift for everyone, so thank you for doing that. And then the last thing I just wanted to point out is every year, you know, we have our goals, we have our visions, our mission statements. And we continuously talk about, you know, how do we improve climate and culture? And, you know, I just want to point out like Matt, like the fact that you just took a moment to think about how that, that's a beautiful way to spotlight the faculty and, and, you know, share out the, the great things that are happening. Especially because from bell to bell, those aren't things that we all necessarily see. So, you know, those are tangible ways that we can help to improve the climate and culture and share the great things that are happening here. So thank you for that, I appreciate that. And also thank you to the students for that beautiful letter, that was wonderful. So, that's all I got.
Yeah, so first off, echoing Kevin, Maria and Peter on all the wonderful things that are going on in the business office here in this room. I want to commend the teachers and the admin for the awesome presentation and just working together, developing goals. It takes extra time out of your day and really you see the focus coming together and it's beautiful. That we can see the trends and see these kids grow and develop and you guys are working them beautifully. So I commend you for that. Plus, I also had a lot, a lot of fun looking at the reveal book over the summer because I came home. And I, I really liked the program. It was, it was quite awesome. So I got to have fun with that over the summer. Another thank you to Mrs. Marsh and Mrs. Yance and, and the class. I caught John, Dom and Josh, I can't remember who else was on there, but thank you very much for the beautiful letter. That was, that was touching. And to tie, to tie the school back into the community, we have such a wonderful community with the historical society in town. I don't know if anybody got to participate in the hay riding at, to the Fort Palisade. But we have a beautiful historical site of Native American land, which is, I believe it's Indigenous People Month this October. It's Indigenous People Month. And to celebrate that and to see the wonderful ceremony that the historical society provided with the Native Americans on Native ground was heartfelt. It was touching, it was beautiful. And Lori Nanny and Bill Chase and the people who pour their heart out into the historical society and keeping that here in our, in our community for the kids to learn and, and know how important that is. I want to say thank you to them. And I hope that we as a school utilize our community. I wanna say thank you to them, and I hope that we as a school utilize our community members as much as possible because they are, they are so wonderful and a great asset of knowledge. Um, I know my kids have enjoyed it down there at the Historical Society, so I wanna thank them. That's all I got.
Nice to know, Jayden. Yeah, that's always nice to tie in, uh, my kids and I have done that. How many years have they been doing that? I mean, it's.
A lot.
Because I think my.
Before they got the house.
I was gonna say, my little.
It was one of the fundraisers to help get the house to have the established Historical Society.
It's, it's great, it's a great tie-in, and that's a, that's a great, um, you know, one of the things that I really think, we have such a, I think we're small, but, and we have multiple different entities, the village, the town, the school, and I, I really like to see those things come together and communication enhancing. And when you have such a, a small, tight-knit community, that really means a lot to be collaborative and work together, and, and it's a perfect example how these things kinda tie in, and it's really great for our family, student, community experience. Great walkthrough tonight with the, the Capitol Project, always good to see. It's just like my blowing how much happens so quickly. Like, it seems like forever, but it's like, holy cow, these are like, it's coming to life, and it's really good to see it come to fruition. Same thing with presentation, love it, love it, it's great, it's really good to hear this stuff. We, as a board, I think it was in twenty twenty-four, O A beliefs and values, I think we sat together at the retreat.
Who was it?
You wouldn't have been on, Kevin.
I was.
I, I was, were you?
I think so. I think I might've just been Kevin, the only one. Twenty-four, so we got together as part of a retreat and came up with some beliefs and values that really help us, I think, come to making decisions, and when we make decisions, it's really nice to reflect. I reflect frequently on these, and there's a lot of things that come, come to play. And one of the things that I have to just focus on this, this board meeting was, we set goals that are measurable, action plans to implement and follow through with monitoring and evaluation of results. Great, great tie-in to that, and I love it, because it's starting to, it's starting to come in. So I'm so glad we did those things in the retreat, I'm so glad I like that tie-in, so, good job to Chris.
Jackie Mallory.
Thank you for coming. Um, okay, well, kudos to the business office, we'll start with that, but we won't go through it all, but thank you for all of the hard work, and I love to see the collaboration and teamwork. So I know Rob mentioned it, but I think that's, that's so good to just reconcile, not only are you doing a decent job, we are all working together, which is no easy feat with lots of different people and many activities going on. So appreciate that, um, and great work. I also love the presentation, getting to see how we're moving forward from an academic's perspective has been awesome and enlightening, and I really love the focus on the goals and how we're providing, what we learned from that data and the conversations that really take place. Like, that's the, the rich meat of those reasons to participate in it, right? Like, the testing is only one data point, and fixing there is not what we wanna see, but how do we make an, an action plan and carry that forward to help our students as we really know the value comes in. Um, and again, thank you to, you know, not only the admin team, but also our educators that are working really hard. You all expressed how much you've been working together with those team members to make review math happen and, and we go with some, some things, and everybody was just jumping in it and getting the work done. Um, congrats to our retirees and our new tenure people, we didn't celebrate as well as we used to do sometimes, so. Circumstances, um, but just, that's an amazing feat, and we all have some amazing people, and I've had some interaction with some of you, and we have nothing but amazing faces. We're so lucky at this school to have so many dedicated, um, educators, team members, resources across the board, and, um, there's no shortage there, so we're lucky to have you and have you for a long time now. Um, and, uh, lastly, so a shout out to our Titans, I know it's not school affiliated, but they're our kids, so, um, huge shout out to our Titans, our cheer, and our football players. Our season is over finally, oh, gosh, couldn't come back down fast enough, but.
Still cheer zone.
It's, yeah, still cheer zone, and they're still in the banquet, so I'm limited, so, but, um, we had a great season. Teams learned a lot, there's a lot of, um, you know, challenges along the way, but we have some amazing kids and families that have been supporting the organization. Um, a lot of, a lot of learning this year, and, um, it's just been exciting to be a part of it in a different capacity. And a huge thank you to J.C. J.C., I have to tell you that you have coordinated, and my husband glows about, you know, what it's been like to work with you in terms of getting space and navigating some of the construction challenges, and we were fortunate enough to get to play one of our games on the turf under the lights, and people glowed about it. It was an amazing experience, the kids, I don't, I'm looking at Maria because her kiddos cheered with us, but like.
Incredible.
They were, people were cheering, the stands were so loud, like, it was packed, and everybody felt amazing about it. So we're excited once, you know, the grass is there and everything's totally done, uh, what it'll look like for us next year, and I'm already trying to figure out how we can get home this year, but, um, that'll be a problem for next year. But everybody has said, J.C., how just accommodating you have been, and then even when we're working with, um, the O E, uh, Aggies team from the concession standpoint, like, that's no easy feat to coordinate all of that, and you've made it seamless, and, you know, just our pleasure to work with, which is not always the case in those circumstances. So, um, everybody that has had that, that interaction in the system is super pleased. So thank you for making it easy, um, you know, dealing with, you know, the outside groups can also be a challenge and present its own difficulty for you, but, um, you've been just accommodating and, and kind in the ways that you have, and you have made some of those things. And congrats to those kids, it's been an awesome season, they've worked really, really hard. Our JV team made it to the playoffs, um, they did, Bruce, you know, I love the score, but, um, they made it into the playoffs, which is the first time we've done that in quite a long time, right? I'm looking at you now, do you remember the last time we were in the playoffs?
Um, so we are just a championship team.
Hold on, hold on, all right.
Lost out, Jamie.
Okay, okay, fine. All right, well, I'm just gonna end it. We're gonna have to, it's exciting, lots of good crap for a while.
You're gonna talk it up.
You just had to tell me the truth, so, all right, you're up.
Uh, walk through was great, um, it's a lot, it's a lot to look at, it's a lot to take in. It's hard to believe that, you know, we're over where we are. One of the things that I, I, you know, I take away from it is it, it, it looks so substantially different to the point where you're disoriented when you're walking through, and then you start doing these, you know, comparisons. So we had to do comparisons earlier last week, but I'm done it right now. Uh, just the college campuses, some of those rooms look like, like, they really look like they're out of a, you know, uh, you know, a, a Rockford, U V, or somewhere like that, I think that was, those were comments that were made as we were walking through. So, um, I, I'm just very appreciative of how close we are and how much quicker it is happening than our last Capitol Project. Uh, so I'm very happy about that. Matt, you did a shout out, I'm gonna do a shout out to, uh, Mrs. Astro. Uh, she's, um, new this year, and my son has, um, just absolutely loved being in her room. And she doesn't realize this, but she provided me with a really cool, uh, experience. Uh, I worked at Bondwell for about five years as a mechanic, and, uh, it's right in my backyard. And she took, uh, a group of kids over to Bondwell, and, uh, my son came home and he said, "Yeah, I can't believe that you were responsible for hauling that machinery." And, uh, no, I, I know, it sounds like a joke, right? And I still have all my fingers, and like, I know, yours doesn't, uh, but like, at the end of the day. No.
My grandfather.
Yeah, Mr. Galloway, he lost to you. He give you like a, yeah, that's not even funny really, but like, at the end of the day.
I'm just staring at you for it, though.
Yeah, I know, I know. So, so, uh, it was really, it, it meant a lot to me for him to come home and say, "Yeah, I can't believe, um, that when you were nineteen, that that was all your responsibility." And, and it was, and it was really cool for him to, like, just get to, yes, I, I am a teacher, and that's a, a really important job, but like, that's just a different aspect of my life that he's never seen. She provided you with a moment that really meant a lot to me. So thank you, um, and I really appreciate you being here. Uh, I feel like she is invested in my son and in the class, and it's a, really one of his favorite parts of his day. The assessment piece, great, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy, I'm very pleased, uh, to look at that. Revisit it, and then just keep it coming, just, just keep it coming, like, it's not an I gotcha moment. It's, it's not a like, oh my gosh, what the heck is going on here? It's like identifying, you know, where are we great, and how can we duplicate it? That's it, uh, and then moving forward, and just continuing to have that dialogue with us. I think, you know, one of the things that I am noticing in my classroom right now, uh, is attendance, right? Attendance has never been so poor across the board, and I, I have a message for anybody that's listening right now. You need to attend, and you need to be here every day. Not just the children, but the adults as well. And when you're not in attendance, you can't take on the message for the day. And when you miss the message for the day, you're not a part of our team. We need you all here, children, faculty, as many days as you possibly can be. Because when you're not, there is a void. So with that being said, please consider making your attendance better. Being present when you are here and doing your absolute best in the position that you hold, either as a student, a teacher, a bus driver, or whatever it is to make Oldfield the best place it possibly can be. So with that being said, I'd like to call the meeting to an end at seven thirty-seven, can I get a motion?
So what?
Can I get a second? Um, Pfizer?
Aye.
Opposed? The administrators, come on up here for a second, please. Paige, can you, uh, turn that up?